Good afternoon. This sixty-second meeting of the seventy-third term of the Baltimore City Council is now called to order. As a reminder for members, the press, and members of the public in attendance, we are asking all attendees to take this opportunity to silence any electronic devices you may have, including cell phones. Our invocation this evening will be delivered by Pastor Amin Flowers, pastor of Life Church Ministries. It is our pleasure to welcome you now.
Thank you, Pastor.
Thank you. Let us pray. Oh Lord my God, what an awesome wonder to consider all the worlds Thy hands have made. I see the stars, I see the rolling thunder, Thy power throughout the universe displayed. We are here on this evening to express adoration and admiration to a God who has granted us a new day. It is with the God's love and the grace that we can see a new way. We are grateful for our leaders who govern and make decisions based on convictions and not convenience. We pray for this political body today as they work on behalf of all Baltimoreans, passing laws that are not just for a few, but the many. We ask God that you grant wisdom to our leaders who sit in the balance of the haves and the have-nots. We ask that this solemn assembly is led by the Spirit and not by self, to create change for the better and not comply to that which is convenient, to legislate and lay aside all bias, and to live out a truth that transforms our community from scared and shallow to strong and sacred. In the name of a God, of Harriet Tubman, Benjamin Banneker, Thurgood Marshall, Frederick Douglass, and Cab Calloway, all famous Baltimoreans and Marylanders, we say amen.
Amen. Thank you Pastor Flowers. Everyone please stand and join me for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. For our showcase this evening, it is my pleasure to welcome David Rosario, Board President, and Cindy Klebek, Board Secretary/Treasurer of Latino Providers Network. With that, the floor is yours.
Wow, well, thank you very much, Madam Counsel, and all the council folks that are here. Thank you Pastor for that wonderful start. It's always great to invoke on the Most High, and I'd like to thank you for that. We are, we are three days in our Hispanic Heritage Celebration, and it's such an honor to be here to showcase the work that the Latino Providers Network does. Just to get it started, I want to say to everyone here, please use the Latino Providers Network as a resource to what is in the community, what work is being done in the community to assist that demographic that is the Latino community. I truly believe that when we cater to a demographic and make it great, the city becomes great. Everyone follows. So, the Latino Providers Network is here to showcase the work that a lot of organizations are here to, are doing today, and we'd like to continue that. So, since nineteen ninety-two, we've been getting that done. We noticed that the Latino community was getting bigger, and we knew that there were organizations that were taking care of this demographic, but they were doing it in silos. We needed to create an organization that would bring these organizations together to create synergy, to see what was going on in community, who is doing the health, who's taking care of education, who's helping these folks get housing, who's helping these folks get businesses and, and create business and maintain businesses? So, this is why we say our vision is to unite self-sufficient, empowered Latinos in the community. Our mission is to maximize the resources in the Latino community through advocacy, education, So, we are about seventy-five-plus membership. Now, this is what that looks like, seventy-five organizations that cater to the grassroots community. So, that means that every organization that maybe takes care of thousands of folks in the city are brought together at the Latino Providers Network to talk about what's going on in their world, what are they doing to create better or bring resources to this community, what is needed? So, when there's a gap, we quickly understand and know where the gaps are because our members, they say, they say so, they tell us. So, some members, some benefits that being part of the Latino Providers Network provides is, first of all, they get to enjoy the great tacos of Sinaloa in Eastern Avenue, which has the greatest tacos in Baltimore, I believe. Anyway, that's lunch. Every month, last Monday, we have tacos, we have rice, we enjoy each other's company. You have free admission to LPM community and networking events, discounted admissions, access to the LPN website. So, that means that if you are part of our member, you have access to our website and all our members. And guess what? All their folks that they take care of. So, it's, it's networking at its finest. Access to LPN social media channels, Instagram, LinkedIn, Facebook, it's a tax-deductible membership. And we just signed a memorandum of understanding with the Hispanic Business Chamber of Commerce. Why? Because if you walk down Eastern Avenue, you get hit with all the smells, all the sounds. What does that mean? That means that folks are starting to create businesses. That means that these businesses need to understand how it works, what do they need to be self-sustained in the city of Baltimore? And here are just a small snapshot of what that membership looks like. In the healthcare, you'll see that there's Esperanza Center, great powerful organization that's been around for a very long time, Latino Economic Development Center, Cool and Associates, just to name a few, and of course, Mayor's Office of Immigrant Affairs. Immigrants, not just Latinos, folks, but immigrants, immigrants that are now here in Baltimore to stay. And you see it whenever you walk around a lot of the neighborhoods and you see all the different foods now, and wait, that's not a Latino sound, that's not a Latin, that's not Spanish. No, we are creating homes for many immigrants, and we're bringing a place where they can all get together, Latino Providers Network. Next slide. Now, Ms. Cindy is going to tell you what we really do.
Good evening, everybody. Next slide, please. So, these are some of the things that we do. We hold a monthly resource meeting. It is on the fourth Monday of every month. You're all invited if you would like to attend. Our next one is our Hispanic Heritage Month Celebration. It is a week from today at noon. You can go on our website, which is www.lpnmd.org, and under our events page, see the information about that event, and sign up to attend as a guest. We typically, at those meetings, we have two to three organizations present about their resources and their services to share that information so that it gets out, so that people know what that organization does, or what that organization does. So, it makes it much better for people to be able to give meaningful referrals when you need to say, hey, you know, I, my client's having this problem, but you know what? I know David, and I can refer them directly to David rather than just giving them a phone number to call. It's more meaningful. I'm sorry. The other thing, some of the other things we do is we participate in cultural and community events. Some things that we have done were Dia del Niño, Dia de los Muertos, and the Fiesta Baltimore's Parade of Latino Nations. Next slide. Our annual signature event is our LPN Feria Latina, which happens on a Saturday in either May or June, depending on scheduling. We bring together partners who have, it's an outdoor festival. We have booths where they can directly communicate with, and share information with the community. But there's also food and music and children's activities, so it's a really fun event. We encourage everyone to attend. At our annual Hispanic Heritage Celebration, we give out our annual community service awards. So, we're giving them out next Monday to five very worthy people, unsung heroes, who are doing great work in the Latino community. Next slide. We've also, pre-COVID, did six sessions of our Mi Futuro College Fair, where we took Latino and immigrant high school students and connected them with colleges. They also got to learn about the college application process and financial aid opportunities, as well as meeting with mentors in the community. We are planning for our seventh iteration of that event in the spring. And also, pre-COVID, we also did educational workshops for things like how to start a business, creating power of attorney documents, and financial literacy and safety. Next slide. Some other things that we've done for the community is, last Thanksgiving, we partnered with Kids in Need of Defense or KIND to provide Thanksgiving mealboxes to some of their client families. We helped about fifty families with that. And we also really believe in education, and so we always support fundraising efforts to provide scholarships to immigrant and Latino students. Next slide. I'd like to point out, my lovely, our lovely compatriots are all here in their, in their lovely black t-shirts. Those are our Board of Directors, so of course David is our president. Our Vice President Kate Shakuta is here, and our other directors are here, Jeff, Mary Cruz, Juliana, and Yane. Next slide. So, the most important thing that we wanted to get across is please connect with us. You can go to our website, www.lpnmd.org. You can connect with us on social media. We have Facebook, Instagram, and LinkedIn. Or you can register on our website to attend one of our meetings as a guest. We certainly invite you to do that. Next slide. We thank you for the opportunity to share information about our organization. We really believe in our mission, and this board works really hard to do all of the things that we just talked about, so please connect with us. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for joining us this evening. I know that in all of the fourteen districts, we have a growing population.
Yes.
Latino population, and these resources are very helpful, so thank you.
Thank you very much for the opportunity.
Repeat your website.
Yes, our website address is www.lpnmd.org.
Thank you. And I also see and just want to quickly recognize a former council president, Lawrence Bell, has joined us this evening. And at this time, we're also going to do a special recognition. I would like to welcome the Epsilon Omega Chapter President Jan Wood Carter, and the Rosai Omega Chapter President Robin Ott, and their esteemed members to the council chambers. These are two of the largest and oldest chapters in the entire AKA sorority in the country. We thank them and their social action committee work focused on voter registration, civil rights, and furthering diversity, equity, and inclusion efforts. Could the two presidents stand, and then your members as well? Thank you. Thank you. Thank you for the work that you continue to do in our, in our entire city. I'm fortunate to have a building with, for the AKA chapter and really a number of sororities in, in the six districts, so I see your work hands-on and just thank you for everything you do for Baltimore City.
Thank you.
And then I do understand you did a number of pictures earlier and a group picture, so, so thank you for that. The clerk will call the roll of the members.
Vice President Middleton, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Conway, Schleifer, Torrance, Burnett, Bullock, Costello, Stokes, Ramos.
We will now proceed with the adoption of the journals.
I apologize, Madam Vice President, we have a quorum I need to read.
Thank you. We will now proceed with the adoption of the journals.
Madam Vice President, the journal for the August twenty-first, two thousand twenty-three meeting proceedings are on the council member's desk.
Without objection, the journal will be adopted. Hearing done, the journal is adopted. Bill signed by the mayor can be found beginning on page two of the agenda.
Yep, and we're going to do executive nominations, so first up, we have EA two-three dash zero-two-one-zero, Craig B. Jeter, Bureau Head, Solid Ways Department of Public Works.
This nomination has been assigned to rules and oversight.
EA two-three dash zero-two-one-one, Anwar L. Young, Member, Fair Election Fund Commission, District Seven.
This nomination has been assigned to rules and oversight. We will now turn to bills being introduced. The clerk will read the first bill.
City Council Bill two-three dash zero-four-two-five, Improving Safety, Inhabitability, and Supportive in Other Residential Housing, for the purpose of defining the term supportive housing facility in the Baltimore City Building Code, requiring a permit before any person may transfer ownership or operation of certain property in certain circumstances, updating use and occupancy classifications, and categorizing congregate living facilities as rental dwellings and requiring their license. Sponsor Administration and Ramos.
This bill has been assigned to the Economic and Community Development Committee.
City Council Bill two-three dash zero-four-two-six, Supplementary General Fund Operating Appropriation, MR Arts and Culture, five hundred eighty-one thousand three hundred and thirty-four dollars, for the purpose of providing a supplementary general fund operating appropriation in an amount of five hundred eighty-one thousand three hundred and thirty-four dollars to MR Arts and Culture Service, eight-two-four, Events, Art, Culture, and Film, to provide funding for general operations and providing for a special effective date. Sponsor's Administration.
Councilman Costello.
Thank you, Madam President. This supplementary appropriation, I just want to give a little bit of background for our colleagues and for the public. I did discuss this at the Public Council Luncheon earlier today. BOPA is appropriated annually approximately two-point-six million dollars. Of that three-hundred thousand dollars goes to grants that BOPA distributes on behalf of the city of Baltimore to our local artist community, leaving approximately two-point-three million dollars. This figure right here is approximately one-quarter of that as part of our budget deliberations for fiscal year twenty-four, which took place in June of this year. We came to an arrangement where we cut three-quarters of that and only appropriated one-quarter, which was approximately five hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars. This is the second of four quarterly installments. We'll be, I will be announcing a hearing later today for next Tuesday at ten AM for this matter. This is to cover quarter two of fiscal year twenty-four, which is October first through December thirty-first of calendar twenty-three. We will not have a passage of this supplementary appropriation completed by October first, but the thought here in talking with the president's office, yourself, and other leadership, as well as the administration, is that if we can get this out of committee next Tuesday, that that would indicate council support for this supplementary appropriation. So, I've been working with the CAO as well as the Bureau of Budget and Management Research to figure that out, and how we can ensure BOPA can continue to receive city funding as they come in and present their case next Tuesday to have made demonstrable progress towards reforming some of the issues that we've identified at the organization, specifically board governance. In an effort to make sure that this doesn't happen again, I've been working with BBMR and the CAO's office again to ensure that the supplementary appropriation for their quarter three of fiscal twenty-four installment, which would cover the period of January first through March thirty-first of calendar year twenty-four, would be introduced to the council in early October, giving this body an appropriate amount of time to deliberate upon that and ensure that BOPA is continuing to make demonstrable progress to resolving the issues that we've identified for them. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you for those added details. This bill will be assigned to the Ways and Means Committee.
City Council Bill two-three dash zero-four-two-seven, Baltimore Police Department, Trauma-Informed Care Training, for the purpose of adding the Baltimore Police Department to the list of city agencies who are required to designate two agency staff members to participate in certain trauma-informed training and activities. Sponsor Cohen.
And this bill has been, oh, I'm sorry, jumping the gun, Councilman Cohen, and try to speak louder into the mic so everyone can hear.
Gotcha. Thank you, Madam Vice President. I stand before you today to amend the Elijah Cummings Healing City Act, which this body passed into law in two thousand twenty. That legislation calls on Baltimore to address trauma on a systemic level and provide trauma-informed training for all city agencies. It made Baltimore the first city in the country to have passed legislation to make us fully trauma-informed. It also made Baltimore, I'm sorry, this resolution will officially add BPD as one of the agencies required to complete this training through the Healing City Act. In two thousand twenty, when we passed the original legislation, we did not have local control over our police department. Today we do. Since the law's inception, we have seen two agencies engage fully in trauma-informed training, both the INAC Pratt Free Libraries and Wreckin' Parks, and the act has become a national model with two other cities emulating what we've been doing. This year, Wreckin' Park has engaged in training from the executive leadership team all the way down to summer lifeguards, and it's been great to see the culture of change within their agency. We now have the opportunity to add BPD to the list of agencies that can be served by these trainings, which can be a critical tool, not only in dealing with those whom officers serve, but for officers themselves. We know that police experience an enormous amount of burnout, toxic stress, and trauma. They are called to serve our city in its most challenging and often lowest moments. A two thousand eighteen study found that police officers and firefighters continue to be more likely to die by suicide than work in the line of duty. If last week's after-action report from the Brooklyn Day shooting teaches us anything, it is that this is an agency that badly needs to be trauma-informed. Officers are relearning to engage with residents in a way that centers community and considers the historical trauma that's been inflicted. I believe this is one powerful step toward repairing the relationship between police and our communities. Thank you, Madam Vice President.
Thank you. This bill has been assigned to the Public Safety and Government Operations Committee.
City Council Bill two-three dash zero-four-two-eight, Mayor's Redistricting Plan, for the purpose of establishing the boundaries of the council districts for the election of members of the Baltimore City Council. Sponsor's Administration.
And this bill has been assigned to the Committee of the Whole.
City Council Bill two-three dash zero-four-two-nine, South Baltimore Gateway Community Impact District Management Authority, Board of Directors, for the purpose of altering certain membership requirements for the Board of Directors for the South Baltimore Gateway Community Impact District Management Authority, amending certain term limits for certain members of the Board of Directors, and providing for a special effective date. Sponsor's Porter and Costello.
This bill has been assigned to the Economic and Community Development Committee.
City Council Bill two-three dash zero-four-three-zero, Resoning, twenty-five-twenty-nine Georgetown Road, for the purpose of changing the zoning for the property known as two-five-two-nine Georgetown Road, block seven-seven-nine-six, lot zero-zero-three, as outlined in red on the accompanying plaque, from the R-six Zoning District to the I-one Zoning District. Sponsor Porter.
This bill has been assigned to the Economic and Community Development Committee.
City Council Resolution two-three dash zero-one-eight-seven-R, informational hearing, theft of cars, for the purpose of inviting the Deputy Mayor of Public Safety and representatives from the Baltimore City Police Department, the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Safety and Enga, Safety and Engagement, the Office of the State's Attorney for Baltimore City, the Baltimore City Sheriff's Office, the Office of the Maryland Attorney General, the Maryland's Department, the Maryland Department of Transportation, Motor Vehicle Administration, and the Department, Maryland Department of Juvenile Services, to engage in a discussion with the city council regarding the recent rise in auto thefts throughout Baltimore City, including a discussion of options to prevent or mitigate such occurrences, occurrences. Sponsor Cohen.
This resolution has been assigned to the Public Safety and Government Operations, oh, I'm sorry, jumping the gun again, Councilman Cohen.
All good. Thank you, Madam Vice President. I stand before you today to address a pressing issue that affects the safety and well-being of our city's residents, the alarming surge in auto thefts. The Baltimore Police Department has reported a staggering seven thousand, seven hundred and twenty-seven auto thefts in the first two-hundred-and-sixty days of this year. To put this in perspective, that's an average of twenty-nine stolen cars per day. That is more than a two-hundred percent increase when compared to the same period last year. When a percentage is that high, it cannot just be a statistic, it must be a call to action. It is also a reason that some residents have chosen to leave our city. On August eighteenth, we witnessed a tragic event in my district where an armed carjacking escalated into the senseless killing of Daryl Brenner. This heartbreaking incident serves as a stark reminder that beyond these statistics are real lives, real families, and real consequences. The causes of this crime spike are multifaceted, but I firmly believe that by working in cooperation with city, state, and federal agencies, and community partners, not only can we gain a comprehensive understanding of the factors fueling this concerning surge, but also craft effective strategies to confront and curb the threat. I look forward to bringing these agencies together imminently to address this challenge. Thank you, Madam Vice President.
This resolution has been assigned to the Public Safety and Government Operations Committee.
City Council Resolution two-three dash zero-one-eight-eight-R, request for federal action, redesignating temporary protective status for El Salvador, Nicaragua, Honduras, Nepal, and Cameroon, and instating the designation for Guatemala. For the purpose of requesting the Biden Administration and U.S. Department of Homeland Security redesignate El Salvador, Nicaragua, Honduras, Nepal, and Cameroon for temporary protective status, in-state designation of temporary protective status to Guatemala, and support initiatives that will keep immigrant families together so that our community members can live with dignity. Sponsor Ramos.
I recognize Councilwoman Ramos.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. This resolution sends a clear message to President Biden that we, the city and the city council, demand that the president extend temporary protected status to countries, to the residents from countries named within the resolution, as well as include Guatemala. Residents who have come to the U.S. from these countries have escaped persecution and death to make a better life for themselves here in the U.S. Temporary protected status allows for these residents to work, pay taxes, and contribute in their new home here in Baltimore and across the U.S. We hope they will be granted a path to citizenship, but for now, we need to protect, they need to be protected to avoid deportation and likely death in their home country. Today, we pass this resolution, or we're asking to pass this resolution, to request President Biden to do the right thing and extend temporary protected status to our neighbors. I move to suspend the rules for immediate adoption.
Without objection, the rules will be suspended. The rules are suspended.
Madam President, I move that the resolution be adopted.
The clerk will call the roll.
Vice President Middleton, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Conway, Schleifer, Torrance, Burnett, Bullock, Costello, Stokes, Ramos.
The motion is approved. This resolution has been adopted.
City Council Resolution two-three dash zero-one-eight-nine-R, informational hearing, athletic trainers in Baltimore City Schools, for the purpose of inviting representatives from the Baltimore City Public School System, the Board of School Commissioners, and the Office of the Comptroller to brief the city council on the reported shortage of athletic trainers in Baltimore City Schools, including a discussion of progress on the settlement agreement reached in two thousand twenty-two to hire additional athletic trainers to prevent injury to student athletes at city schools. Sponsor Stokes.
Councilman Stokes.
Madam President, you know, I don't know if y'all remember Elijah Gorm, who actually played at Mervo, who loved playing basketball, and unfortunately, he passed away. He had a head injury, and then reading an article on the news about Baltimore City has no, not one athletic trainer. So, we might have a football, high school football game on, and a high school basketball game on. One of those games will not have an athletic trainer. I think Baltimore City absolutely have none. So, if the parents are committed to letting their kids play, which I say is a dangerous game, when the parents commit to let them play, we only owe Elijah Gorm and the parents a commitment that when their kids get hurt at either a football game or basketball game, we have the right kind of trainers there to support and help them in their injuries. Thank you very much.
Thank you. This resolution has been assigned to the Education, Workforce, and Youth Committee.
City Council Resolution two-three dash zero-one-nine-zero-R, informational hearing, Baltimore City Schools Payment to Vendors, for the purpose of inviting representatives from the Baltimore City Public School System, the Board of School Commissioners- the Board of School Commissioners, and the Office of the Comptroller to brief the city council on reported issues regarding payment of vendors by city schools, including a discussion of delayed and unremitted payments to past vendors in the current system for procurement and payment of vendors. Sponsor Stokes.
Thank you, Madam Chair. You know, um, not just our vend-
I recognize Councilman Stokes.
Um, you know, our vendors here in Baltimore, not just our vendors, our contractors, we gotta do better in how we support our small businesses here in Baltimore. So I'm only gonna say, if you do the work on time, then you should be paid on time. Thank you.
This resolution has also been assigned to the Education, Workforce, and Youth Committee.
City Council Resolution two three dash zero one nine one R recognizing the service of Sidney Sid Grossman for the purpose of recognizing Sidney Grossman for his distinguished service to the city of Baltimore and his ninetieth birthday on September twenty second. Sponsor Mosby.
Chair recognizes.
Thank you, Madam President.
Councilman Costello.
Thank you, Madam President. Please add me as a co-sponsor. Sid Grossman is is about the finest human being you will ever meet. Wish him a happy birthday and want to thank him for his service to the city of Baltimore, and want to thank Council President Mosby for his leadership on this and recognizing Sid's contributions to the city. At this time, I move to suspend the appropriate rules for immediate adoption.
Without objection, the rules will be suspended. Oh, we have additional sponsors and add myself, Councilman Torrance, Councilwoman Ramos, Councilman Schleifer, Councilwoman McCray, Councilman Conway, Councilman Dorsey, Council, Councilman Bullock, I'm going through the room, and Councilman Cohen, and Councilman Stokes, and Councilman Burnett. I think that's the total council. So I extend floor privileges to Sid. Could you come up, please? I'm gonna give Sid a chance to say a few words, but you are celebrating your ninetieth birthday, and also you have been working for the city for a number of years, nineteen years. And I'm sure all of you, as you come in City Hall, you, Sid has been a wonderful greeter and just always smiling, and this is, you know, we would be remiss if we didn't celebrate you for the wonderful work that you do for City Hall and the city of Baltimore and just showing that older adults are still very hard workers in our city. So older adults are still wonderful, hard workers of our city, and we present this citation to you on your ninetieth birthday here on September twenty second and your distinguished nineteen years of service to the citizens of Baltimore. As a greeter, you've always met those that enter City Hall with an energetic smile and provide superb guidance. And we bestow this presidential citation to you for the wonderful work that you do and continue to do. Congratulations.
I'd like to thank the president, the vice president, and all the council people, and it's been a pleasure, a privilege, and an honor to work here in City Hall. I love coming through those doors in the morning, and City Hall, everybody in it has become a family to me, and it's really a big, a pleasure and an honor. Thank you so much. Yeah, I'm gonna need some help. I got to- Up where? Up where? I don't smile much.
Thank you.
Thanks again. That's what I get for working out.
And I would be remiss if I didn't mention that Sid also has a PhD in mass communications, so. Thank you, thank you, Sid. Okay, Councilman Costello, I move to suspend, you move to suspend the rules.
Yes, yes, Madam President.
Chair recognizes you.
I move to suspend the appropriate rules for immediate adoption.
Without objection, the rules will be suspended. The rules are suspended. The clerk will call the roll.
I move the resolution favorably.
Be adopted.
To be adopted, and the clerk will call the roll.
Vice President Middleton.
Yes.
Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Conway, Schleifer, Torrance, Burnett, Bullock, Costello, Stokes, Ramos.
The motion is approved. The resolution has been adopted. We we have one city council bill that is being reassigned, and that's City Council Bill twenty one dash zero zero six two R, the American Rescue Plan Quarterly Oversight Hearings. This bill is reassigned from the Ways and Means Committee to the finance, to the new Finance and Performance Committee, which is chaired by Council Chairman John Bullock. You can find the consent calendar in section A at the back of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar? All those in favor of approving the consent calendar say aye. All opposed say nay. The motion carries, and the consent calendar is approved. We will now move to bills in second reader. Before we do, I would like to recognize Chairman Costello.
Thank you, Madam President. I move, we read short titles for second and third reader for the duration of the meeting.
Without objection, we will read short titles for the remainder of the meeting. Hearing done, we will read short titles, Rules and Legislative Oversight.
City Council Bill two three dash zero four two four Unfair, Abusive, or Deceptive Trade Practices Penalties.
The chair recognizes Councilman Schleifer.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. The Rules and Legislative Oversight Committee held the final voting session on this bill today. We are moving forward this bill with two amendments. One amendment is to remove the criminal jail time penalties associated with the Consumer Protection Bill that the state has, as well as clarifying that this bill does not apply to the entities exempt by Title thirteen of the State Commercial Law Article so that this law is directly aligned with the state consumer protection law. And so I would like to move the amendments favorable.
There's a second. All those in favor of adopting the amendments say aye. Those opposed say nay. The amendments are adopted.
I'd like to move this bill favorable as amended.
Is there a second? All those in favor of adopting the amendments, the amendments say aye. All those opposed say nay. The floor amendments are adopted. And you'll move the bill favorable.
And so I recognize, I'd like to move to invoke City Council Rule ten, twelve dash one for same-day advancement from second to third reader. Give me a second.
Is there a second? Chair recognizes Councilwoman Ramos.
Madam Vice President, I thought we were adopting the amendments and then the floor amendments and then the bill, so we, we need to adopt the bill.
So we still have to adopt the bill.
Right, we have adopted, well, he had called for an amendment to the bill, but you had called for the amendment. So I just wanted to be clear in the order in which we're doing.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I think he did the floor and the committee amendments at the same time, so we need to do them separately.
Okay.
So I'd like to move the committee amendments favorable as amended at the hearing.
Heard a second. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed say nay. This bill will be printed-
The committee amendments, we're right here, so we're gonna do the committee amendments first, so they're adopted.
So the amendments are adopted.
Now he needs to do floor amendment.
And I'd like to, right, I'd like to move the floor amendment favorable, so the bill favorable with the floor amendment.
Is there a second? Second, I Ramos, all those in favor say aye. All those opposed say nay.
I'd like to, I'd like to move the bill favorable as amended with both the floor as well as the committee amendments.
Is there a second? All those in favor of approving the bill, say aye. All those opposed say nay. The bill will be printed for third reader. And now I recognize Councilman Schleifer.
Yeah, Madam Vice President, I'd like to move to invoke City Council Rule twelve dash one for same-day advancement from second to third reader.
Is there a second? Having been properly moved in second, the clerk will call the roll.
VP Middleton.
Yes.
Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Conway, Schleifer, Torrance, Burnett, Bullock, Costello, Stokes, Ramos.
The ayes have it, and this bill moves to third reader today. Ways and Means.
City Council Bill two two dash zero two eight six Sale of Property South Side Boston Street, southwest corner and south New Kirk Street, block six five eight seven, lot zero zero eight A and south side Boston Street, southeast corner and south New Kirk Street, block six five eight seven A, lot zero one six.
Chair recognizes Chair Costello.
Thank you, Madam President. Other amendments on my colleague's desk, can I move the amendment, amendments?
There was a second? All those in favor of adopting amendments say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. The amendments are adopted. Chair Costello.
Thank you, Madam President. I move the bill favorably as amended.
Is there a second? All those in favor of approving this bill say aye. Those opposed say nay. This bill will be printed for third reader.
City Council Bill two three dash zero three eight four Sale of Property fourteen to eighteen Light Street, seven East Redwood Street.
Chair recognizes Chair Costello.
Thank you, Madam President. I move the bill favorably.
There was a second. All those in favor approving this bill say aye. Those opposed say nay. This bill will be printed for third reader. We turn now to bills on third reader for final passage that require invocation of City Council Rule twelve dash one for same-day advancement. The clerk will read the bills and call the roll.
City Council Bill two three dash zero four two four Unfair, Abusive, or Deceptive Trade Practices Penalties. Vice President Middleton, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Conway, Schleifer, Torrance, Burnett, Bullock, Costello, Stokes, Ramos.
This bill is approved. We turn now to bills on third reader for final passage. The clerk will read the bill and call the roll.
City Council Bill two three dash zero three five four Administrative Procedure Act Revisions. Vice President Middleton, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Conway, Schleifer, Torrance, Burnett, Bullock, Costello, Stokes, Ramos.
This bill is approved.
City Council Bill two three dash zero three seven four Sale of Properties seven oh seven East Thirty Fourth Street. Vice President Middleton, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Conway, Schleifer, Torrance, Burnett, Bullock, Costello, Stokes, Ramos.
This bill is approved.
City Council Bill two three dash zero three eight eight Urban Renewal Lauraville Business District Amendment One. Vice President Middleton, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Conway, Schleifer, Torrance, Burnett, Bullock, Costello, Stokes, Ramos.
Thank you. Now we're on committee announcement. Chairs, when you hear, this bill is approved. Now we're on committee announcements. Chairs, when you hear your committee, please proceed with your committee announcement. And we'll start with Economic and Community Development. In lieu of Chair Middleton chairing the council meeting, I will have Vice Chair John Bullock do the committee announcement for Economic and Community Development.
Yes, and thank you, thank you, Madam President. On Tuesday, September twenty sixth here in council chambers, starting at two P.M., we'll be hearing Bill number two three zero three eight seven Minority Women's Business Program Reauthorization. On that same day, at two oh five P.M., we'll be hearing City Council Bill two three zero three eight zero Charter Amendment Community Reinvestment and Reparations Fund. Then on Tuesday, October tenth, at two P.M., we'll be hearing Bill two three zero three five six Zoning Modifications and Research and Development Facility Use. At same day, at two oh five, we'll be hearing Bill two three zero three nine six, City Streets Closing. At two ten, we'll be hearing Bill two three zero three six one, and that is zoning conditional use conversion of a single-family dwelling unit to two dwelling units in a R eight zoning district variances, and that's sixteen thirteen Edmonton Avenue. At two fifteen P.M., we'll be hearing Bill number two three zero three four three. Thank you. A conditional use conversion of a single-family dwelling unit to three dwelling units in a R eight zoning district variances, six three three South Motford Avenue. Also, on Tuesday, the tenth, at two twenty P.M., we'll be hearing two three zero three eight six Landmark List Home of the Friend List, followed at two thirty P.M. for two three zero one six O R Study Report Eviction Channels Disposal of Tenants Possessions. And at two thirty five P.M. on Tuesday, October tenth, we'll be hearing Bill two three zero three five one Resoning eighteen oh one to eighteen oh seven of Loomingdale Road and eighteen hundred to eighteen sixteen North Rosedale Street. And finally, on Tuesday, October twenty fourth, starting at two P.M., we'll be hearing two three zero three nine nine Plan Unit Development Amendment for Benhurst Park, filed at two oh five P.M. for Bill two three zero three nine seven Resoning western side of North Lehigh Street, southwest corner Eager Street and western side North Lehigh Street, fifty, fifty-two, seven feet, seven feet south of Eager Street. And at two twenty five P.M., we'll be hearing Bill two three zero three five seven, the Strengthening Renter Safety Act. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. And then we have Education, Workforce, and Youth Committee Chairman Stokes.
The Education, Workforce, and Youth Committee will hold a hearing on Thursday, September twenty eighth, twenty twenty-three. It's a legislative oversight. Representatives from the Baltimore City Children and Youth Fund will come before the committee to give an update on the status and/or activities associated with the fund. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Health, Environment, and Technology Chairman McCray, Chairwoman McCray.
Thank you, Madam President. The Health, Environment, and Technology Committee will hold a hearing on two two dash zero one four two R informational hearing Workday Implementation Status Wednesday, October eleventh, twenty twenty-three, at ten a.m. within council chambers. The committee will also hear two two dash zero one four two R information here in Baltimore City Employees' Safe Transition to Work After COVID-nineteen, Wednesday, October eleventh, twenty twenty-three, ten oh one a.m. within council chambers. On Wednesday, November the eighth, twenty twenty-three, at ten a.m., the head committee will be hearing two two dash zero one three six R informational hearing- informational hearing, Status of the Baltimore City Municipal Identification Card Program within council chambers. And last, on Wednesday, November 15th, 2023, at 10:00 AM, the Health, Environment, and Technology Committee will be hearing 23-0379, Facial Recognition Technology Regulations within council chambers. Thank you.
Thank you. Public Safety and Government Operations Chairman Conway.
Thank you, Madam President. The Public Safety and Government Operations Committee will be reconvening to hear LO 23-0039, Brooklyn Mass Shooting, on Wednesday, September 27th, at 10:00 AM. The committee will be hearing Bill Number 22-0139R, Investigational Hearing on Human Trafficking, on Wednesday, November 29th, 2023, at 1:00 PM. The committee will also be hearing Bill 23-0377, Surveillance Technology Procurement, at 12:00 PM on November 15th, 2023. And lastly, the committee will be hearing LO 22-0030, for multiple dates, at 1:00 PM, October 11th, 2023, at 1:00 PM. And the topic will be Group Violence Reduction Strategy. November 8th, 2023, at 1:00 PM, the topic will be Juvenile Justice and Violence Involving Young People. And the committee will finally meet on December 13th, 2023, at 1:00 PM to have the end-of-year recap for BPD and MONC. Thank you.
Thank you. Rules and Legislative Oversight, Chair Schleifer.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. The Rules and Legislative Oversight Committee will hold a hearing on Bill Number 23-0161R on October 19th, 2023, at 4:00 PM for the resolution of an informational hearing on anti-littering campaign in Baltimore City at the request of Chairman Conway. The committee will also hold a hearing same day, on Bill Number 21-0084R, October 19th, 2023, at 5:00 PM, for the resolution on the informational hearing of the implementation of Water-for-All program at the request of Councilwoman Ramos. Thank you.
Thank you. Ways and Means Committee, Chairman Costello.
Thank you, Madam President. I move to suspend rules 10-2 and 10-3 to announce a hearing.
So approved? Is there...
Or without objection?
You want to approach the chair, please?
Right.
Without objection, go ahead. You just do it.
Thank you, Madam President. I move to suspend rules 10-2 and 10-3 to announce a hearing.
Without objection, 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 go ahead.
Thank you, Madam President. The Ways and Means Committee will hold a hearing on Tuesday, September 26th, at 10:00 AM in council chambers on Supplemental General Fund Operating Appropriation, Mayorality Related Arts and Culture in the amount of $581,334. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. And lastly, Finance and Performance Committee. Your first hearing, sir?
Yes, Madam President. So, and also, since we're talking about this, I am looking, very much looking forward to chairing the Finance and Performance Committee. Just for everyone's edification, I want to talk about the members who we're going to have on that committee. So we're going to have Councilmember Chairman Costello, Councilmember Chair Danielle McCray, also Felicia Porter, Councilwoman of the 10th District, and also Chairman Schleifer will be joining us on that committee. So we're looking forward to deep dive in some of these issues. First of which being, on Thursday, September 21st, we'll be hearing Resolution 230414, Property Tax Credit Reform Work Group, at my request. We will also, that is again, at 3 o'clock. Yes, 3 o'clock, thank you. And then on Thursday, September 28th, at 3:00 PM, here in council chambers, we'll be having Legislative Oversight, Bill 21003, which is Quarterly Budget Briefings, at the request of Councilman Costello, Chairman Costello. And then followed by that, at 3:01 PM, we'll be having Resolution 210062R, American Rescue Plan Act Funds, ARPA Funds, at the request of President Mosby. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. We move now to regular announcements. Members, please wait to be recognized to make any regular announcement. And I'll just quickly start with something that is on my mind. This Saturday, we did a wonderful street naming of a woman that was very instrumental, particularly in northeast Baltimore. Miss Rosa L. Barbara, a lot of people called her Mother Rosa, and a street was named after her, Fernley. And it happened Saturday, as we know, which was a very beautiful day, a wonderful day for a street naming of a woman that really spent most of her life basically working in a community, servicing a community, and that community is still thriving and looking very well, thanks to her leadership. So it does show that when you have strong leaders in your neighborhood, and you work to, you know, you all are working together, things will prosper. Anyone else that would like to be recognized? Councilwoman Ramos.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. I just have two quick announcements. First, I want to acknowledge that this is Hispanic Heritage Month, and we heard from Atheno Providers Network today, and we'll hear from another organization next meeting. But we celebrate Hispanic Heritage Month between September 15th and October 15th to capture all of the Independence Day celebrations for all of the nations, or most of the nations, in Latin American countries. And so there's going to be events across the city, including Fiesta Baltimore, the parade in October, Hispanic Heritage Awards, activities at Cultural Alliance, and really all over the city. So I do hope that many residents get a chance to share in our history and culture this month, celebrating Hispanic Heritage Month. On a separate note, I want to publicly congratulate and make sure all of Baltimore is aware of two of our native sons representing us well nationally. Bishma Kromarti, who is from our district, specifically Waverly, he has just won Project One Runway on Bravo, and we're very proud of him. And he's featured his fashion work at New York Fashion Week. He's doing, he's doing a lot of work in Baltimore, and I hope to invite him here in the chamber. Also, many of you know John Waters, who's a famous filmmaker and author. Today, he received a star on Hollywood's Walk of Fame. That's pretty awesome. And so, all of his films have been made in Baltimore, and he continues to feature his hometown in his books and movies. We're very proud of these Baltimore neighbors and, or natives, and I hope that you'll join me in congratulating them on their accomplishments. And obviously, District 14 is very proud. Thank you.
Thank you. I now recognize Councilman Conway.
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to add to the moment of silence, Ken Dismaris. Ken was a scion in his community, in the New Northwood community, but probably most people know him really well from his time on WYPR and his radio show. Had an opportunity to attend his funeral this morning, and just want to make sure that we acknowledge him in the moment of silence.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Schleifer, Councilman Schleifer. And you're also going to close out, but are there... But you know what, let's, since we'll let you do yours, before you close out, we'll move on to Councilman Cohen, and then come back to you.
Very briefly, thank you, Madam Vice President. Tonight, at 6:30, Lieutenant Governor Aruna Miller, Special Secretary for Opioid Response, Emily Keller, are hosting a town hall. There'll be a panel. Excited to join it. We know that the opioid crisis has been devastating in the city of Baltimore, as well as across the state of Maryland. So we'd invite everyone to come out in the next 20 minutes to the Enac Pratt Central Branch for that town hall. Thank you, Madam Vice President.
Thank you. And then, are there any other announcements? Councilman, Chair recognizes Councilwoman Schleifer.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. I would like to announce that Councilman, Baltimore County Councilman Izzy Patoka and I are going to be hosting a regional conversation about public safety in Baltimore. We share over four miles of city-county border, both on the west, as well as the northern part of my district. And so we're going to be hosting this conversation this Wednesday, September 20th, at 6:30 PM at the Meyerberg Center at 3101 Fallstaff Road. And I would also like to, for our moment of silence, Ken Dismaris. And lastly, the next meeting of the city council will be held on Monday, October 2nd, 2023, at 5:00 PM.
Thank you. There being no further business, this concludes the 62nd meeting of the 73rd term of the Baltimore City Council.